Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this joint subcommittee meeting between the Finance Subcommittee and the Transportation Subcommittee. We're in the mayor's reception room tonight, so I just want to go over a couple things. The microphones that you see in front of us tonight are good for the fact that we're being televised live right now on Channel 8, and it will be replayed on Channel 99, but they do nothing for amplifying in this room. So if we have questions tonight, we all need to speak loudly so that everyone can hear us. As I say, right now, the meeting is being televised live on Channel 8, but it will be recorded and replayed on Channel 99 at a future date. At this point, I would ask the clerk to please call the role.
Chairperson Nutter?
Present.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Lay? Chairperson Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoi?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Five present, one absent.
At this point in the meeting, I would like to... What we're talking about tonight is a proposal to look at transportation and maybe to see if there's ways that we can improve on the way we currently do transportation. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to the Assistant Business Manager for Transportation, Mr. John Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Per your motion, I was in front of the school committee a few weeks ago with my scenario of what we could do could save money, but also part of that was that we were looking at other ways and other ideas of tried and managing this escalating number that keeps on going up year after year. We had tried to, as I mentioned in the memo, we had tried to work with UMass Lowell, and they were very excited to do that, but under time constraints and right now, it probably wasn't a good time. And as everybody probably remembers, in the article that you did receiving your packet a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Britsimus, who is the head of Analytics Department at MIT, is here to join us tonight and talk to us about his algorithm, which was presented to the Boston Public Schools, and I'd like him to speak upon that right now. He's just going to make a brief presentation, but it's going to be more of a question-and-answer type of thing. And with that being said, Professor Britsimus.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very... I would like to tell you briefly a bit biographical information, what we have done with the transportation system in Boston, which is currently using our methods, and what is the proposal I have for you to consider in Lowell. So I am Greek, as you can tell. I have come to the United States in 1985 as a graduate student. I did my PhD at MIT from '85 to '88, and in the last 30-plus years, 31 years, I've been a professor at MIT. Currently, I am the head of the Analytics Department of MIT, a large place that has 60 faculty and 150 graduate students. I would like to tell you a little bit what has happened in Boston and where we are, because that's quite relevant here. So we have been part... Myself and two of my doctoral students have been part of a competition that the Boston Public Schools opened up in April of 2017, which we have won. And our solution was deemed by the people in Boston as very advantageous to the city. So they actually, without actually telling us, they didn't tell us a priori that they will do that. They actually implemented the solution in the summer of 2017 for the first year. This is how to transport, using buses to transport the students in Boston, both charter schools, about 200 schools, 125 Boston Public Schools, and about 75 charter schools and some special education as well. And at the time, the solution that we proposed... So at the time, the school system in Boston utilized 650 buses, and our solution, in fact, proposed 530, but they only implemented halfway, being more conservative, and also they did not want to alienate drivers. They implemented the solution of about 598 buses, about 52 buses, less than they were using. They estimated that the savings for that was of the order of $5 million. The solution was implemented the first year, and now it's the second year, it's also being implemented. In the meantime, I mean, the first part was done as part of a research project with my students and so forth, but because the need for constant support from Boston Public Schools, and given our success, we also have demand from other schools, I decided to start a company. It's not appropriate to ask my students to support... I mean, it's not appropriate for them. The first time is exciting, because we wrote a paper. As you will see, we got actually a major international award, more of this in a minute. But I formed a company. I have been a serial entrepreneur all my life. I mean, it's not unusual for me to do that. And we built a system that is at the scale of Versantrans. Versantrans is a system that I understand is being used in Boston, but is also being used here, from what I understand from John. So it has the capability of managing all the aspects, but it has a very significantly better engine of designing bus routes. In addition, so that's a part of the value proposition, bus routing and how to improve it and so forth. There's another value proposition that we tried in Boston, and to give you a bit of background, it was very public in the media, involved the mayor of Boston. So part of the competition was also a system to change travel... bell times, start times, from Boston Public Schools, something that has not changed in Boston for 30-plus years. I won't comment on the reasons for that, although I have quite a few comments on the matter. But in the end of the day, we proposed a solution, and that's something I would like to illustrate there, in this graph, if possible. I don't know how well you can see it, but to make the long story short, and this is interesting, the problem of start times is a national problem. The reason I know that is because I have been contacted, I'm not exaggerating, from about 70 or more superintendents around the country, I mean, major cities, you can imagine, not only in the New England area, nationally. Because many cities around the country would like to change... There's ample research to suggest that start times, particularly for high school students, need to be later than they are today. There's ample evidence on that. This is not scientific evidence. It is beneficial for their well-being, how well they do in schools, but it's a very politically-charged matter, as you know, because it affects family lives. You know, if I say to John's family, who has arranged its life to have a start time, let's say, at 8:30, and I say, "John, well, it's 7:30 for you. You have to arrange many things," and that's not exactly always popular. We are... We were given the desire of the Boston Public Schools. We created an algorithm, and what is interesting about that is by changing start times, we accomplish many objectives. We can have public school... high school students start later the day, which is beneficial for them, and also younger children, elementary school children, to finish the day earlier. Of course, they have to start earlier to finish earlier, but that's what they told us they would like. This has created... And the corresponding school committee approved, I remember the day, 2000... December of 2017, approved to go public, to approve the change, and the mayor also endorsed it. But then there was complaints from parents, and then the end, the mayor withdrew its support because it was politically damaging to him, even though he just won the election. But we have an algorithm. We have an algorithm. And what is the benefit of this algorithm? The algorithm, I told you, with just busing, we decreased the 650 to 530. We only implemented 598. But if we, in addition, if we combine changing start times, that is good for the students, and operating the buses, we were able to do it with 430, 440 buses. That's significant savings. You know, if you say about a bus is about $100,000 conservatively, because of the salary of the driver, maintenance of the vehicle, that's conservative. Boston is higher than that. That's why I said 50 buses roughly $5 million. You can do the multiplication. The Boston Public Schools is still using the system. In fact, more than using. We are now... We do a lot of work. I mean, I have a team now that helps Boston with various aspects, and in fact, this year, we are starting much earlier so that we'll be better prepared with Boston. And I would say this has been a success. I mean, to demonstrate the success, there is a major award in my field, in the analytics field. The winners of... It's called the Edelman Award. You don't, of course, know it, but the winners of this award is typically the major institutions and corporations in the world. The previous winner was the Federal Commission for Communications in the United States. The winner before was the IBM Corporation. I don't remember every single, but the major places in the country. So there are about 50 participants, and they select five or six finalists. This year, Boston Public Schools within MIT is one of the five, six finalists. In fact, we're going to... This is the first time in the history of the Boston Public Institutions that... This is a major thing, I mean, you know. And the reason we were selected is because the algorithm is... It has originality, but it leads to significant savings for cities like Boston. And the reason I created the company is because I do believe this can be exported to every city in the country, because it includes significant... And I will now go to the system that I propose for here. So in my opinion, the system... And I've visited before, John, and I spoke with Lady Rebecca Duda, who is responsible for the assignment of students to schools, which is the beginning, if you like. So if you think about it, let's think what is involved. First of all, there is a decision to be made, whether or not we are going to change school times. This is a complicated political decision, because it affects families, affects their lives. This is not without controversy. One might or might not do it, but there are two other decisions. The first decision is which student goes to which school. They submit three choices, my understanding is, and then Rebecca, perhaps with John, I do not know how exactly it is done, but they select one of the three, if possible, but they do not take into account the effect on transportation, because the city of Lowell, as you know, better than me, but I saw the map, has bridges. And the bottleneck in the morning and the evening are exactly in these five bridges. There might be more, but five major ones. And if you are careful on... So if you are careful which school out of the three you assign, you might do much better in preparing for school busing as well as travel times. So I have a proposal for you. It's a three... It has three parts. The first part is that I, together... When I say "I," I have a team, but I care about being successful here, because I recognize some of the issues, financial issues, that the cities like yours face. Is that the first part is to build a system, an automated system, that assigns schools to families to maximize the families that we honor the three, one of the three, but at the same time, take into account transportation cost. That's number one. Number two, this is squarely in my area of expertise, of optimization. It's really an optimization problem. By assigning, for example, you try to avoid bottlenecks on the bridges, if you can. Still honoring, you cannot do 100%. You cannot say that I will eliminate all difficulties 100%, but you can definitely do a much better job than this is done today. That's number one. Number two, and it doesn't need... I don't believe... This is not controversial, because, you know, the families, you know, propose three schools, we'll honor as much as we can. Actually, it's going to be honoring much more than it does today, because a computer algorithm globally does. Computers are stronger than humans in that way. Two, busing. So having assigned the right families, the right schools, I'm assuming no changes on the start times at the moment. We will use our algorithm. It's not only that I use the algorithm. I will actually... Part of the offer is that, John, I will give you the actual software that does this. It's not just, in other words, when a family calls and says, "John, where is the bus?" What happens and so forth? I'm certain they call you from time to time. I know in Boston, it's happened.
Once or a while.
You know, multiple times a day. This is part of a system that knows exactly if the buses have GPS, there's an app. I mean, it's a very sophisticated system. It's a very sophisticated system, and it optimizes the number of buses. So in other words, my expectation is a combination of the two solutions. The first idea is assigning, as I mentioned, schools to families. Second, optimizing the buses. I believe we'll have serious savings. I'll tell you what I expect will happen. Now, in addition to that, and this is only if we have you in agreement and the mayor and so forth, we will also have a solution, which we may or may not implement, is about travel... Start times of schools. So if we are... So there are three levers, in a way, right? If we apply all three levers, I expect the benefits to Lowell would be... I would not be surprised if it's of the order of above $1 million. All three. You know, my understanding is you have about $11 million cost a year of that, plus or minus, plus or take. So I'm only saying conservatively about 10%. That's the savings, if we implement everything that we have. Now, the two solutions, namely assigning buses to students and the busing, is not particularly controversial, because the students will be... And the families will only face the same problem they face today, namely, no change of start times. So this, I suspect, would lead not as big savings, but I wouldn't be surprised if we have, let's say, $800,000 sort of savings. I'm conservative on my estimates, believe it or not. I'm conservative. So you saw in Boston, from 650, we actually proposed a solution for 430. That's about, you know, a third, a third, which in your case would be about $3.5 million. I'm not saying it will lead to that, but I'm saying it will lead to a third of that. Now, it's a matter of choice and whether you would be interested. I mean, you don't know... You change start times, not only because of cost. You only change start times because it's the right thing to do. I mean, at least in... I mean, there's ample research on that. I have of the order of 2,000 papers, psychology papers, psychiatric papers, that record that how beneficial it is for students to... Particularly, high school students, for their career in the future. So I hope you have a sense of what Edelman proposing. And by the way, I propose this to do at zero risk for you, namely, I take away risk. Namely, you don't have to pay anything for this upfront, only if there is a savings. So the proposal I have is we'll determine the savings. You know, we have to agree on what would be the... Let's say, at the moment, how many buses do you use, John?
For just...
The whole thing. The whole thing.
The whole thing?
No. $11 million primarily for the...
We wouldn't be doing the outer districts, so to be the in-district, we'd be looking at a little over 100.
100 buses. So let's... Which is roughly the same. 100 buses, $11 million, about $100,000, which is roughly the same in Boston, about $110,000 per bus per year. So let's say we save 10 buses. That's about a $1 million savings. Is that roughly correct, John?
No.
No?
I would...
Approximately, I'm not saying.
Plus, we're a little bit different in Boston. We're at $370 a day, all right? So we're looking basically at $56,400 per bus.
Per bus?
Which is coming out to about...
About half.
4.275.
Yeah. But whatever it is, so we will agree. The contract will say, this is what we are paying at the moment. If we save X buses, this will translate in money, no?
Correct.
So the proposal I have is that you take zero risk, but if indeed this is realized, my company keeps 20% of the benefit of the delta, you keep 80% of the benefit for a period of five years. And then we... And in addition, we'll give you the software. You will help you manage it. So there's no risk. You might say, "I don't..." I mean, it is great. You spend your effort and your time. Unfortunately, we're not going to use it. You owe me nothing. This is a hard proposal to gain, because I... The reason I arrived at this proposal is because, I mean, to be honest, the first couple of years, we would lose money from this proposition, because, you know, as you know, engineers that have, you know, you can do the multiplication. I have a team and so forth. You know, for us to make money, it should be after the third year. The first two years would be... The first year, we'll be losing money. The second year, the third year, we'll be break even, and fourth and fifth will actually make some money out of this. That's roughly the story. In the meantime, you get 80% of the benefit. If you agree to do it, you don't have to. If you decide not good enough, you know, you owe me nothing. And you will see the solution. It's not that... So what is it I propose? You give me access to your system. I download the data. I'll, you know, be glad to sign confidentiality agreements, as we've done in Boston. Yeah, so we will propose solutions. I will present the solutions to John. We'll have feedback, and also start working with Rebecca as well, right? And work with you if you decide... So we'll have a solution that is... I'll propose another two solutions. One solution is only school assignment and buses, no start times, easier to implement. And then a third solution that has, in addition to, new start times, right? I mean, we have to give me input of what, you know, you have to tell me, you have to guide me on this, because there are multiple objectives here. And you have a choice. You can use this, the first solution, the second solution, or none.
I know the committee's going to have questions, so...
Of course. I'm done. But is it clear what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. I will be... Now, I spoke too much. I don't like speaking too much, believe it or not. The more you talk, the better. I'll be glad to tell you honest, appropriate answers, whatever you ask me.
Concerning a timetable of...
Of timing?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say, from the time I get data that I can use, I would say the school buses, we are talking one or two months to get a solution that you can see, and then there's an iterative process that... You know, I don't believe that I'll give you magically one solution, because I do not know yet the system as well. But as I get feedback, we'll update. If this is not, we take it or leave it. You will say, "I will work with John." I'll say, "John, this is a solution." "Oh, great, but..." We changed. We go back and forth.
So if we did, we'd be probably looking at a completion date of no later than April 1st.
Could be more safe, May 1st, because there are multiple iterations and so forth. It's not that is we have to get feedback. You can also provide feedback as well. This is not something I try to put you down your throat. I would like to... The solution, you know, my reputation is online as well, you realize, eh? I'm not a nobody, you know? If this fails, you, of course, don't succeed, but it's... I have a black eye on my... You know, that's something I don't have. I mean, you can ask, but I have a good name. So I would like this to work, not only for monetary reasons, because I... I mean, I'm also passionate about education. I'm an educator for many years, and my mother was a school teacher. So I very much... I mean, there are many other things I can do to make more money, believe me when I say that. This is not monetary. I also sold many companies. It's not my... But I'm passionate to change, because cities like yours overspend on transportation. So by making it in such a way that it's relatively no risk for you, because you really can decide not to do it, I mean, I don't see major risks that you face, at least not that I can see. Maybe you can now ask me and then maybe find unusual risks that I don't see.
Mr. Chairman, it'd probably be a good time to probably open it up to the floor for some questions.
All right, and I'll start. Are you aware that we have a voluntary desegregation plan, and does that get fed into this program also?
I mean, you have... Cities have specific constraints. We would like to create a solution that works with the constraints that you have, of course.
So you said there are three factors?
Three components, yeah.
And you gave the option of using two or three. The first was school assignment, bus assignment, and start time.
These are the three.
What if we chose to have bell time changes, but not the schools, so that the students are not impacted as far as relocating them to different schools? What do you anticipate the savings could be with that?
Benefit. So carry on school assignments, not changing the assignments, just the start times.
The start time and the...
I would say this could be very significant. I mean, you know, start times is a significant driver, of course. It might be of the order of hundreds of thousands, eight, seven, between about a million, just on that. It's a big driver, but the complication is that it creates, you know, the Lowell times, I don't know if this is the name of the local... I mean, it will have something to say on that, no?
Significant changes.
That's right.
The person he's talking about.
So, yeah. For example, the Boston Globe, I don't know if... I recommend the Boston Globe. This created, I don't know if you have followed the Boston... It has created a significant uproar. However, and the Boston Globe in the beginning was somewhat positive, then somewhat negative, they did not have a clear position. September 22nd, and I send you the article, John. They put... The Boston Globe doesn't do, you know, every so... I mean, it's rare that... So they created a website that educated the public. they created a website that educated the public about the benefits of changing start times, monet, for, on the monetary level, not only on the, on the, on the benefits to students. The same is true in Lowell, that is, you know, but, but if we are going to go on start times, I would recommend that we discuss the, the, the public, you know, educating the public, because without educating the public, my fear is, we might create more harm than good. Even though, and the problem is, start time changes, ninety percent of the people benefit, but ten percent of the people don't benefit, right? And the ten percent of the people, at least in Boston, are very vocal, are very, very vocal. So, one has to play this correctly, and you are the key players on that. Yes?
Thank you. So, a reverse question from what Ms. Turner asked. So if we were to choose option one, which is the, we let the machine place our students, John had given us an estimate about, of about forty-five percent of our population would need to move schools, is that correct?
This is, not, this was John's solution, mine's solution would be much less. So in other words, I cannot tell you exactly, but notice the optimization can control. You tell me, Dimitri, I want up to ten percent, up to twenty percent, I will optimize up to the level you want. But if you leave it unconstrained, my suspicion is it could be of the order of thirty percent. But you can constrain, it would be ten percent change, fifteen percent change, I mean, you know, it would be a parameter in the optimization. Am I clear?
Yes. I have to say, I understand how disruptive changing the school start times are, but I think it's even more disruptive to move children. If you're in second grade or third grade in one school, and now you have to move to a new school, make new friends, so that's why...
It's difficult.
The forty-five percent that John had told us was astronomical to even think about. So my question to you is, if we, can we start with, whatever we start with?
With the smaller.
How difficult is it to then change?
Not difficult.
To say, okay...
Not difficult.
Well, this is what thirty percent looks like in savings, what would fifteen percent change look like in savings?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not a big deal to tweak it.
I mean, no, it's not a big deal. No, no, we will propose solutions, that's the advantage of working with John, is that we will, or Rebecca, for that matter, we will, you know, give you solutions, you tell me, what is a solution with only five percent change? This, what are the savings? What is a solution with ten percent change? We'll give you a solution, fifteen percent change. So we can provide a curve that says, these are the benefits, clearly, the more you allow it, the better the benefits, the more you allow change, of course. I mean, and when I say, the reason I said it, one, two, and three, don't feel I'm rigid, right? So, as I told you, my primary objective is for the solution we develop to be used in your environment. You know, given that my, my, my ultimate objective, I mean, I, I would like over five years at least not to lose money, I have to admit. But, but, but it's not, I mean, it's okay if the first year we do smaller, therefore the benefits are less, and you are more conservative, you also like to work with me to understand, all of it's understandable. I would advise you, though, even if you decide no bell time changes, no reassignment changes, to change the allocation of buses, because this is, the students don't care. I mean, who cares if bus seventeen takes them, or bus nineteen, they would not even know. So, but the city will care, because it will get significant benefits on the money. But, in other words, what I'm saying, I'm flexible, and we can work with you so that the level of disruption can be gradual. Maybe first year we do ten percent, the second year we do another ten percent, you know, so we can do it in such a way that's less disruptive for the city.
So, you build the algorithms with the stipulation that each year, as kids age out of the school district, we start to have the algorithm put the kids where the, where the best spot is for them, based on the algorithm?
Yes. On the other hand, I don't want to overpromise, because, you know, there is, there is changes, you know, you have a family that moves or leaves, we thought, I cannot overpromise on that, because there's changes. I mean, Boston anyway, about thirty percent of the students change every year. So it's hard to anticipate all this. So my advice would be, you know, for the change, make a proposal with the current students, and understand as the, the expected benefits as the allowed change increases. You decide ten percent. Ten percent is not minor, you know, about eight hundred students will have to change the, change schools. We implement this change. Next year, we allow another ten percent. So in other, we can go there gradually, and, and with real data on the students that are in the system, as opposed to anticipate it in the system.
One other question was, John, you said that it was going to be a significant change for bell times, can you expand on that and tell us what that means?
Yeah, I can only say in Boston, because I have not, I don't have the data for Lowell. But in Boston, we can also affect, something that we didn't do correctly in Boston, from a public relations perspective, is we allowed eighty percent change. It's a, it's a big change. Even though, if you look at the underlying social characteristics, it was the right thing to do. I mean, I have data on that. If you look at the race distribution, income distribution, it was extraordinarily fairer. I mean, it was. That's why Boston Globe, ACLU, by the way, in the beginning was very negative on us. ACLU is our biggest supporter, because we do, we do these things on merit, we don't do it to favor one group or the other. So, I say all this to tell you that we can control, the same way we can control the disruption due to, due to allocation of schools, we can also, you know, disrupt, I mean, I think you have how many, twenty-two schools?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six schools, plus the alternative, you know, we can say maybe up to five schools this year, ten schools this year, I mean, you know, if you let it alone, it will optimize, it might be eighty percent change, I would not be surprised on that. But we can constrain that. We can say, suppose you have only four schools changing, what is the best for, for the finances of the... I mean, on the other hand, another aspect of, that you, I would like you to think about, this is a difficult thing to do. It creates friction, because you might say, one of the four schools that changed might say, why me and not the other school, right? And you have to then argue that the algorithm and so forth. If you take, you know, if you dive, you will have the negative, on the other hand, if you say to the, to the city, that was not done correctly, in my opinion, in Boston, if you say to the city, look, we are going to save eight hundred thousand, and, and a lot of this money, we are going to put back to your, to your environment, so that the, the parents that are, of course, are disadvantaged, now they might be after-school programs, athletics after time, I mean, you can be creative on the money you save to put some of, some of what the city will benefit, but some of it, the schools will benefit. And you can be creative on that. Creative in a good way, I mean, you know, not, I'm not, I'm not insinuating anything, I mean, to, to, to help the children. That's the way I see it, anyway.
One of my biggest concerns and complaints I hear from parents, especially parents who move into this city, they live in a neighborhood that has a school right down the street, or two schools in most cases.
Yes.
And I know one parent whose child was sent to the middle school right down the street.
Yes.
But the elementary school students are being bused to the other side of the city.
But, that's the beauty of optimization, Jerry. Optimization can handle this. It could actually coordinate, I mean, of course, we need to know, I mean, we don't know how, but if you, if, so, if we know the identities of students and so forth, we can put a constraint that families are together, that is, all of them or none of them. In the, in the, in the Boston Public Schools, they are like that, that is, you know, we also have, here's a constraint that I, I mean, I, I have traveled through the Boston Public Buses, School Buses several times, and there are fights over there, the children fight to each other, I mean, I'm not kidding on that. So, we actually put constraints that if people fight, we separate them. As a matter of constraints, not as a matter of, you know, so we can handle these constraints. So, in other words, analytics, what is analytics? You hear analytics, nobody... It's the idea of using the data that you have to arrive at solutions that make sense, that are flexible, and add value to the organization. Monetary value, improving outcomes for students, and so forth. And we know how to solve the problem. I mean, you know, we have this example from Boston, you are, John, I'm certain you are thorough, you perhaps investigated that with my, our friends in Boston. I mean, I'm not saying we are perfect, nobody is perfect, but I say our solution is high quality, this I vouch for. As evidenced by being adopted in Boston, a major national award, and I would say, I mean, another example is, one of my students who was involved in this, leading it, today he's finishing, he's looking for an academic position, he's the hottest candidate in the, in the, in the academic market, he has already multiple offers, based on his work.
You, you mentioned the, the five main bridges...
Yep.
...here in the city, which is the Huntsfall Bridge, the Bridge Street Bridge, the Aitken Street Bridge, the School Street Bridge, and the Rock Bridge.
I don't know their names, but I saw it in the...
Those are, those are the five.
Okay.
However...
Yep.
...we have another ten bridges that we have over different canals here in the city.
I know, I've seen it.
Seven to eight of those bridges are going to be under construction...
Oh, boy.
...in the next two years.
You need a system?
Right.
I mean, you need, I mean, I did not know that.
Right, well, and, and, you know, we want, we, the city got a Tiger grant, and I was, I was reminded by a couple of the city councilors that that Tiger grant goes into effect this year, that they will be starting to work on, simultaneously, on, on three or four bridges at a time, so...
And you need this time, Jerry, no traffic?
A lot of those bridges will be either down to a single lane, or as in the case of what's going on on Market Street right now, not, not able to use at all.
That is part of the Tiger grant, Mr. Nutter, is the, is the Market Street, where that is a very difficult corridor for us to, to route.
Exactly.
I would need to know that.
Right.
That is, because I do not know it at the moment.
Yeah, that, that's why I wanted to bring that, that, to me, that, that's, the biggest issues that I see us facing i- is, is, and, and my proposal originally, is I'll start it with going back to the neighborhood school concept, which is, you know, where we walked to school, and I know, you know, a lot of people keep, times have changed, people keep reminding me, I know, I have four grandkids, I know, times have changed, but, we, you know, we still have to look at what's best to shorten the commute for our students, especially with...
I agree on this, by the way.
...with this going, you know, with all this activity. We have, Boston had the big dig, Lowell is about to face what we call the big fill, and that's the load overpass project, well, as you come off the Lowell connector into the city, they're going to build that up.
Can I ask, when is this going to start?
That's supposed to start in either the fall...
Late summer.
Late summer, early fall, yes.
Oh, it will affect now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we need to know that.
We are, we are going to be affected traffic-wise in this city, which is...
We need to know.
...unbelievably that is going to affect the travel time of our students, and that's...
But once that is completed...
Yeah.
...there will be a dedicated bus lane.
Yeah, once, once that is done, there will be a dedicated bus lane, yes.
We'll both have Social Security by then, Johnny.
Yeah, we, yeah, we will, Johnny.
But I will not.
I, I, I do want to bring, bring, bring something up here, and I, obviously, I'm not going to doubt Professor Britsima's and his knowledge, and with his algorithm, and having been your transportation director for nearly fifteen years, I could probably come up with fifteen different scenarios as well. The most difficult part of coming up with a scenario is a voluntary desegregation, without a doubt, is a difficult thing to, because you're moving, when I say the last scenario that I gave you, I was stretching streets, just so I could make sure we were within the ten, the minus or plus ten percent of the minority slash non-minority. It's a very, very gray area there, and we, you know, obviously, this committee, and I believe, is, wants to keep the voluntary desegregation. So if that's in fact, that, that is a worry that I have, and I'm, I'm sure maybe Professor Britsima...
Can you explain it, John, a little bit? The vol, I, I think I understand what it means, but if you could elaborate a little bit about that, what it's meaning, if you give me an example of what, how it is being, going to be implemented?
Presently, we have two zones, the east one, and the west one, which I had explained to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then sprinkled inside those zones are citywide schools.
Yeah.
The citywide school that may be in one zone is part, would be part of the statistic of that zone.
I see.
So, the east zone has to be, right now, we're at twenty-six point two percent non-Hispanic white, okay? So therefore, that zone has to be sixteen percent or thirty-six percent in order to...
Plus ten percent, plus or minus ten percent.
Has to be, for that zone to be in compliance.
Okay.
Same thing with the other zone. Right now, we are. However, that is a very, it's a difficult statement, because though the zone is in compliance, if you look at our schools, if you go to the Merklin School right now, well, ten percent of that school is non-Hispanic white.
And why is that, John?
It's just the way it's been assigned. But you may go to the Mc Avenue School, where it might be fifty percent non-Hispanic white and fifty percent minority. So once you, you're done with the percentages in all of the schools in that zone, you're in compliance. That's where it gets tricky.
But individually, schools might not be.
Individually, they may not be.
But that's the beauty of optimization. Humans, not only, every human, me included, cannot do this. It's very complex. You know, we have many schools and so forth, twenty-six schools, but algorithms can do this, can actually balance it in such a way, you, you, let's say, you want every school, not the average, not by zone, every school to have appropriate diversification within, with respect to race. It can do it. It can. And, and, but, but it is part of the initial assignment, it has nothing to do with buses, it has to do with which family goes to, which child goes to what, you know, this is where I honestly believe, even though you, I understand your concern about massive change, but I urge you to consider optimizing, forget about money, in other words, I urge you because it's the right thing to do. If you have all these constraints, I don't know actually how you do it, I mean, I couldn't do it, is, is to put a system that does it, and then restricts the level of change, so you can gradually get there, even if you are not in the very first year. And working with Rebecca and John will put the appropriate constraints. And believe me when I say I know how to solve this problem, I do. I mean, I hope I'm convincing you, but, but, but I do know how to attack this, to, to solve this problem. I've done multiple problems like this in my life, not only Boston Public Schools, I mean, hundreds.
Mr. Lay, Mr. Lay has a question.
Thank you. Dr. Brazini, thank you, and welcome to Lowell.
A pleasure to be here.
Thank you. I have several questions, let me start with the first one.
One at a time.
Yeah. You said, when you did this in Boston, the estimated saving was five million...
Yes.
...dollars a year. That was two thousand seventeen, and I wonder if you have, I wonder if you know that the reality has, if, if the actual, that was in theory, five million dollars in savings, so I wonder if in, in reality, if it actually have been saving them five million a year? I'm just wondering if you have that knowledge.
We applied, so the Boston Public Schools...
Yeah.
My, my information comes from what John Hanlon, it's also John, the chief operating officer from Boston, told me. I mean, I don't, obviously, I don't sign the checks, I do not know the, the savings. But this was a conservative estimate on, on that, and this is what we wrote in our application, in our application for the Edelman Prize, we say this was realized. I, I cannot sign it, because I do not know that, but I believe this is an accurate conservative estimate. The second year, the benefits were less, but the reason is, there was a strike in August of two thousand eighteen, there was a, a significant issue with the drivers. I mean, there was a labor dispute that went all the way into late August, the classes have already started. So as a result, there was a lot of complexity at the time, and I think this year, instead of five ninety-eight, they used six, ten buses. I mean, I don't remember the exact number, but it was higher. So, so as a result, the, the benefits in the second year were less.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, and my, my second question is... So, and my, my second question is, are you charging us one lump sum fee, one-time fee for the service, or we're charging you yearly?
I charge you nothing. But, but I charge you nothing, you realize, huh?
From the beginning, you said, just to.
When you decide, so, to give you an example of how it will be realized, just to demonstrate the mechanics, we will agree, if we save one bus, how much the savings is for the city? John told me fifty-six thousand is the cost. Assume it's fifty-six.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, if this is a one, one lump sum, or this is the service that we use you every year? Okay, that, that's, that's all I need to know for now.
Every year, every year.
I don't think I want to know in detail yet, unless someone.
But we better, if you want me to start.
Okay, sure.
May first, we better have a contract to start, you know, in a few weeks or so, I mean, two, two weeks. Otherwise, it cannot be done. I mean, you know, we are, we are good, we don't, I mean, we need to have time to do all this.
I, I have one more question.
Please.
Okay. One more question is, maybe it's a little bit easier to answer. And you, you think that you're confident and save us about one million a year if we.
Do all of the changes.
More likely, you mentioned about the start time and mostly the high school kids. Do you realize that if we don't factor in the high school kids into your algorithm, would that still, are you confident that we're still saving one million dollars a year?
No, but the high school kids, I don't, because you don't offer transportation to the high school kids.
Right.
They will love, they don't, they don't, they are not included in the financial benefit. They are included on the benefit of changing start times. Their health will be better, there are no financial benefits.
That way, the high school in our case is not.
Is not included. It's just for the eight thousand elementary school, there are some high school students that have special needs that you transport. Only the students, the financial benefits would be doing the same job with less buses and less delay also.
And the broken school, definitely, they have to be signed onto this because they, they will be packed.
Just for clarification, you know, even though we do not transport our high school regular students, we, we transport special need students. So that would still, if in fact that does happen, that may necessitate a school bell time change for Lowell High School, if we're looking at it from a whole perspective here.
It has to, because everything is coordinated.
Just want to clarify that, that's all.
Okay. The gentleman?
Mr. Howie Head.
All right, thank you. Yeah, the things I have concerns about is one that my colleague, Mr. Nutter, said, because I know of a child on Boylson Street that has maybe a football field away from the Pine School, and he has to go to the Wang. And the guy just bought that house.
Who, who chose that? The family?
Oh, it's just the way our system is.
But they wanted one, one of the three choices was the nearby school?
Yes, and he, and they didn't get, yeah, and they didn't get that choice. So that's a big issue for me, and I'm just worried about the chaos that it will start. But anything, I just want you to know that not all school committee people feel the same way. I feel like we should go someday a hundred percent neighborhood schools. That's how I feel. But with that said, lately, we've seen a, a plan that Mr. Dakota showed us that said, we're not going to cross rivers with children. That kind of piqued my interest, because going across bridges and all that traffic concerns that we have, I kind of like that. But I'm a, I'm really cautious to move real quick because of the fact that we're going to cause some chaos, there's no doubt in my mind. But, last couple of things I'll say, and then you can say what you want, so I don't interrupt you again. I look at our, if I'm right on the numbers, I think you said, John, that our budget's around eleven million roughly? Eleven-one. So, and our budget, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Nutter, is that about a hundred and sixty? Or Ms. Turner? Is our budget about a hundred and sixty million? Okay.
This is, I'm sorry, what is a hundred and sixty million?
Our total budget, no, and, and the reason why I'm asking that is our total budget.
For operating schools.
Right.
And eleven million is.
Right.
That's roughly the same analogy with Boston, by the way.
No, when I look at Boston, their busing is ten percent of their whole budget, which is a billion, and their busing's a hundred million.
Hundred and twenty, to be exact.
Okay, thank you. So ours is actually kind of low here, I would think, right? Percentage-wise, if I'm looking at it that way. Okay, no, I, I mean, when I see those numbers, I'm kind of impressed with that, because we're nowhere near Boston's problems. But I do see some buses in Boston, especially with four children, seems like they're running across the city with only four kids in it.
I agree on that.
Okay, so that's about all I need to ask you, and thank you.
No, Bob, I, I share many of your concerns. On the other hand, you, you, your, your first concern was chaotic change. But as I mentioned to the lady, we can control the change. We can say, we only want ten percent change, not, we don't want every family to, you know, we, we, we'll do a gradual change, giving priority. I also believe the, the reason you have some of this distant, even though you have a school nearby, I'll be frank, the schools are not of the same quality everywhere. Maybe a school in that even, might be very, or perceived quality, I cannot, but perception is reality. So as a result, you know, I mean, but the advantage of saving money is you can, you can actually orient the money to those schools that have a higher need for improving. So slowly, over time, not only by, by reallocating funds to the schools that need it most, you can actually improve quality so that you come closer and closer to the dream that you said, namely, this, you know, you know, I myself, when I was a kid, I went to nearby school with my mother. I mean, you know, I had this experience. So I, I believe saving money will be closer to the desire that you express, over time, not immediately.
Thank you. The question I have on the start times for the high school has more to do with all after school activities that high schools are involved with, sporting events and so forth. And other school systems aren't changing their start times, and they have to be, you know, competing against.
You mean, other schools in other cities?
Other cities, in, in the Commonwealth. And so I, I, I wonder about the change time, especially for the high school. But the elementary, middle schools, I don't see that as being much of an interference in terms of after-school activities. Yes, it will probably affect after-school services for parents and so forth, I get that. But I think at the high school level, I think that would be the major problem.
Can I ask you, when does it start today, the high school?
Seven.
Yeah. Oh, boy. It's not correct. It's really not correct.
The problem you have, and Mr. Dakota is correct, is that the conference for sports, especially, most of the schools get out earlier.
Earlier.
Than Lowell High.
Yes.
So, though you are correct that, that it, later time is better for high school students, but when you start talking about sports, and you have to go to Burlington on a bus, and you're leaving downtown at, let's say, three o'clock, well, you're never gonna, by the time you get there, it'll get dark. You'll have a two inning baseball game, you know, it, not to be, I'm not joking, I'm just, I'm giving you.
But even, yeah, but even if you start from seven thirty to eight, say, seven forty-five, these fifteen minutes might be beneficial for the students. Now, whether, given the traffic patterns and given it would be, I mean, I have to look at it. But given the research I've seen, the overall benefits are significant.
I, I understand those benefits.
But there are cons as well.
Thing is, I was at the high school level for eighteen years. So I'm aware of when they did change the start time to a slightly different time, and when the kids were, who were in a team that, or group that had to travel to another school for a competition or whatever.
Even in the afternoon.
They would have to get dismissed early. And missing a good half hour at least.
Clearly, this is something that, of their last.
We'll discuss this one. I mean, this is not. That's, then, you know, that's a tough one.
But to be honest, given that's only one high school, this is a much easier problem. We can say, don't touch the school, it's not a big deal. I mean, it's beneficial to touch, but.
Okay.
I, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
I hear you.
So as you said about educating the public.
Yep.
If we did, the algorithm, does it build the, the, the change ti, well, the start times based upon the geographic location so that it would actually help the traffic flow? If you're staggering the school start times, you're not having all of the students traveling at once, you're actually staggering.
Clearly, clearly.
So it would have a positive impact.
Absolutely. In, in other words, in Boston, there is, I don't know, in Lowell, I don't think it would be that bad, but, but there are students, there's a maximum one-hour limit that a student can be in the bus. And for many situations, it is tight. Because, you know, I don't know if you know that, but Boston offers transportation, it goes, picks students in New Hampshire and comes back. I mean, this is my opinion crazy, but it's true. I mean, you probably don't know that. But it takes, there are students who stay in the bus, one hour in the morning and one hour in the evening. I mean, I have been, and I have experienced in some cases, it's not common, but it's, so I expect, especially if we allow the assignment problem, namely, assignment of students to schools, the overall traffic and the, and the start times, the overall presence, the average time students are in a bus is going to go down substant, substantially. That is, there are monetary benefits, less buses, but there's also other benefits, namely, the students, instead of spending, you know, forty minutes in a bus, they spend thirty minutes. I don't know what the average is now, John.
Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five, yeah, so I think you can save five, ten minutes on that. Which is reasonable, huh? It's not, it's not negligible.
Thank you very much. So a few, a few questions. As you talk about kind of the way you can do this kind of over time, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the three different options we've talked about now. First one would be school assignments. I don't find the percentage as compelling as, would there be any benefit in implementing this in kind of a grandfathered approach, so that as each new class is coming in at kindergarten, we implement this, and then over time, it grows? Is there, is there any benefit to be found in that? My sense has been no, but.
Clearly, the more, I cannot answer that because I haven't done it. But I know from experience is that the more levers the optimization process has, the better the benefit. And it's nonlinear. If you have, let's say, ten levers, you can achieve, let's say, a benefit of a hundred, right? But if you have, let's say, half of that, five, you, you get less than fifty. That is, the more levers, it's a nonlinear, because there are many things to exploit. So, you know, you, as a policy, I mean, you are policymakers, in a sense, you are protecting the public and so forth, you have to decide, I'll, I'll present the facts. I'll say, these are the facts. I mean, within reason, if you tell me to do a million scenarios, I cannot do it within, but I will do reasonable scenarios, especially if we're in collaboration with John. So you have to, in the end, to make the choice, because you have to defend, you know, the, the choice in front, so you have to be the decision makers on that. We could evaluate a grandfathering system, but it's a hard thing to, to, I, I can tell you a grandfathering system, what will happen this year. I don't want to start making assumptions for the future, because I do not know where the students live, the grand, the, the future. So it.
Okay.
We will have to work together on that.
You know, again, the kind of ten percent number, are you looking at ten percent of the forty, was it forty-five percent of people who would need to change schools? Ten percent of that forty-five percent, or ten percent of the population? The full.
I got no changes?
Yeah.
No. I'm saying the following, today, there are eight thousand students that, am I correct on that, John?
That either it transported either one way or the other.
But eight thousand, eight thousand students.
Both ways, about fifty-nine hundred.
I would say ten percent of that number. This is what I was referring. It could be five percent of the number, it's not that, you know, you tell me the.
Okay. So that would be the kind of moderating impact of the, of just the school assignment.
Yeah.
In terms of, of changing the actual bus, now that's basically a routing issue.
Routing, a complicated one.
Absolute, no doubt. So, but with, so within that component, there's really no savings to be found, or are there, if we do this percentage, a percentage approach, even your percentage approach?
Maybe. My recommendation is strong recommendation, is that you do the assignment and the buses. This would have significant benefits for the city. I'm talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands, maybe millions. I recommend to do it, I don't believe it makes any sense to change only the assignment and leave the, the buses untouched. It makes no sense to me.
Okay.
It has to be together. I can understand making no changes and do only the buses. I understand that, because you don't want to disrupt and so forth. But it makes no sense to me to not touch the buses. It ma, it absolutely makes no sense. And I would not do it, by the way. I, you know, if you tell me you are not going to ta, touch the buses, I'm not willing to, because I, you put one, one hand on my back and the other.
So my question was about the buses as an independent one. Is there any value in doing that alone without the?
Yes, there is, there is value. But as I told you.
Not as much.
Not as much.
Okay, that's okay.
Not as much.
So not as much, but there could be a value within it.
But Boston had about nine percent reduction, just on the buses. I don't know your situation. My suspicion is though, I mean, having studied the city a little bit, I mean, I'm looking at the map, I do believe the key is the bridges. And with the issue that you mentioned, if, you know, there's another aspect, you are going to have a mess in your hands. I mean, I, I, I mean, it's a fact. If you have bridges that are being, you know, I've, I have lived in Boston for many years, I know what mess it was. I mean, it doubled my commute time for years. So you have to do something, you have to do something, I mean, it is not, it's not a choice, in my opinion. Forget about me, you have to do something. It would be a mistake not to act. I mean, really.
If, if I may, Ms. Martin, I did have one question, Professor.
Yes.
When, when we look at the, are, are we looking at it from a zone perception? Because I've had numerous calls to my office from parochial student parents on how that will impact their children, because presently, since the ci, city has citywide schools.
Yep.
Therefore, parochial schools and charter schools, who are exempt, charter schools are exempt from the provision, they get citywide privileges.
I'm familiar.
Would they, would parochial stu, schools still get the citywide privilege?
You tell me, John. This is a choice.
I'm not putting myself in that position.
You tell me, that is, I mean, I'm not the policymaker. You are the policymakers. You tell me, I want this or I don't want this. And it would be appropriately designed in the algorithm. Because I do not know the politics, I do not know the, the relative, you know. What I can tell you, if we do it that way, that's the benefit or cost. If we do it the other way, that's the benefit or the cost. This I can provide, but the decision is yours, not mine.
It's my, just final question.
I'm trying to avoid the answer, but.
That was a good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. So on the third option of the, the start times, so, and John, just some information from you would be helpful. I mean, I know that the sweet spot is that like seven, like eight to quarter or nine, that that's where all schools want to fall.
I know.
How many of our schools fall outside of that? I mean, I know the high schools at a little bit earlier, but.
Right. Basically, we're in a, a three-tier system.
Okay.
We're basically a seven-twenty, we have a few, we have the Butler and the Wang at eight o'clock, then mostly our elementaries are then at eight-thirty and nine-ten. So right now, we're a three-tier approach, okay? All of our buses are performing at least three schools in the morning, some four, and the same thing in the afternoon.
Four in the morning.
How you like that, huh? Pretty good, huh?
It is pretty good. Absolutely. Absolutely.
But, that...
Four, my goodness.
Yeah, so...
In Boston, it cannot be done.
Right.
I mean, the, the traffic is such.
Yeah.
We have two-eighty-nine. The other, in other words, each bus, used to be two-point-five, each bus on average does two-point-five routes. The algorithm improved it to two-eighty-nine. That's what the benefits were. Four, it's not imaginable, there's no, you know, this cannot be done in Boston. I mean, you know.
Yeah, that's understandable, certainly. So in the, the...
That's why I was conservative. Otherwise, I would have said much bigger numbers.
So the, we're equally kind of across those, those three ti- those three times, those, so it's spread across whether, and there's no, I mean, I'm looking at the, if the elementary, are all the elementaries falling in that eight-thirty to nine-ten?
The, the Maury School is a seven-thirty school, the Green Alge is a seven-forty school, and then everyone else is basically an eight-thirty and nine-ten.
Okay. I, I think there's, there's certainly great potential. And I think, I mean, obviously, as I think you've stated, the policy issues are our issues, not yours. You know what I mean? So you can count yourself lucky that you don't need to deal with that.
Although, in the end, the Boston Globe wrote, is the algorithm not, even though I, I have, I didn't design anything, you know, don't, I'm with you close, eh? So if something doesn't work so well, I would not be without blame, eh?
But I do, I mean, I do think that there are absolutely opportunities, and I think the idea of being able to automate some of this makes a huge amount of sense. You know, recognizing all the, the different challenges we have, I do like the idea of a graded kind of progression in all this. I think that that's kind of the most responsible way we could go at it.
And I agree by that, by, by the way, you know that I agree.
Okay.
I proposed the gradual.
Oh, okay. So if, I, I think if we can, kind of our next step in getting more information would be to kind of get a sense of what a graduated approach would give, you know, what we, what we think would be reasonable. Because I think from the beginning, our conversations around this were all around, it was all or nothing. You know, it was for us to, to see the savings, we had to change every start time, we had to change, we had to get rid of, of any kind of choice that, you know, those were the only ways to...
If you want millions of, millions in savings, you need lots of change.
Right, yeah.
Clearly, it's, it's a trade-off.
The balancing act we need to do, so that will, that will be the process that, that we need to go through. I just think the more kind of, and recognizing that you can't give us hard numbers, you know, in the back...
I haven't seen the data yet.
So recognizing that, we can maybe look at how we can, can make some assumptions, hopefully some educated assumptions about moving forward and...
Ms. Martin, just for clarification, so when we're asking Mr., Professor Pratsimis, are we looking at a, do you want to see a ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent? What, what the scenarios?
So, I don't get to ask anything, but something along those lines, I think, would be very helpful.
Okay.
Let me say this number request.
To clarify, I think that it's like a, a shopping, you know, an à la carte, where we can add this, add that. You said that you're, you would be able to give us several different options for each of the different factors.
Within reason.
Right, yeah, so if we say...
If you ask me, what would we have a hundred scenarios, I say, give me a break.
Right, exactly.
I mean, if you, you know, look, in the same way that you, you would like to see, same here. I mean, you know, it's not my intention to maximize only benefits. It has to be something that works for the city. Because I, I know, I have seen it close and personal. My, my colleagues at MIT that have children, they both came to my office to complain as if it was my, you know, believe me, I know, I have experienced that. So I would like to do it in such a way, I will give you enough scenarios that at least I feel like reasonable to observe, and I would be willing to do more to, to help. But in the end, it has to be a reasonable compromise. Also, because we need to make some decisions for, for the fall of two thousand nineteen, this is what we're talking about, we better have a reasonably concrete plan by end of May. Because otherwise, how, what, how are we going to implement it? Yeah, so we need to have, so, so my, can I guide you what I expect will happen if we decide, if you guys decide to do it? So, I'll have access to the data. I mean, with appropriate, I mean, I'll be glad to sign even today, whatever agreements we need. Assuming the data, we'll start to go to work. We'll provide, John, our initial plans, and perhaps the superintendent as well. I mean, you have to see, you know, the, the, the leadership of the system should see what the benefits are slowly. I mean, not, get some initial feedback, rerun things. Having an initial dialogue prior to coming to you, because in the beginning, sometimes we make some assumptions that are not correct. That is, but, but, but John, Rebecca, the people that run the system will give us feedback on that. At some point, John, Rebecca, I, the superintendent, are reasonably confident that this is correct and promising. I, I think at that point, we need to propose to you an initial plan. Perhaps get some feedback and propose a final plan after some iteration, and that would be it. And then there is decision time. Because there's no more time on that. I mean, you know, and this, in this iteration, we should take into account the part, that in September, August, September, so, some of the roads are closed because of the construction and so forth. Because, because they will be. The situation today, the situation in the fall is not the same. There's another thing I forgot, that is very important. This is reality in Boston. So the system, you know, as you know, as John knows, about twenty, thirty percent in Boston of the children during the school year change. They change houses, they leave, they come, I'm certain it's going to, I don't know, exactly the same, we're going to be similar. The system, the, 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 the software you will have access to, re-optimizes daily. I mean, that's the beauty. Small changes so that you don't have to add more buses. That is, you might add, you might start with, let's say, ninety buses. If you re-optimize, it will stay ninety. Because if there are changes and so forth, and you start, at some point, say, I have to add a bus, that's ninety-one. This is a slippage you, that you mentioned, that you start with ninety, but because the situation changes, ninety-one, ninety-two, and so forth. However, because you have a system that re-optimizes, it, it has a higher chance of keeping the number of buses at the level you had before. So the, the, or let's say, for instance, the city decides, even though they didn't anticipate, once, one street closes that we used to use in the past, but now it's closed. So we have to re-optimize around that. I mean, that's reality. I mean, in Boston, it happened, I mean, you know, in, in, in the winter time, you know, in, in some, in some times in the, in some, some roads are closed because of the snow. I mean, small streets in Boston, I mean, I don't know what it is here, but buses sometimes, if it snows a lot, it doesn't, they don't pass. So we have to re-optimize around it.
I'm going to go back to Ms. Martin, and then Ms. Turner, and then Mr. Lay and Mr. Hoy.
It's fair to say you are interested. That's good.
Yes, absolutely. Could you describe for me a little bit of the overlay between your existing system and how this new software, how they would kind of, they wouldn't? Okay, so I, I thought you had said that it was, it was...
It's going to be Versatrans with...
Brand new.
Brand new.
It will replace Versatrans.
Oh, okay, I thought you had said that they, that they work together.
No, no.
Okay.
Versatrans is a very old system. Very old. It's, it's not a bad system, but it doesn't have an engine that is appropriate for the occasion.
No, I can appreciate.
That I am aware of, in Boston. This comes from Boston, doesn't come from me.
So you know how with Excel, you have what-if analysis and all of that type of stuff? So when you design this program for us, or this algorithm, are we allowed to change the constraints or the, the da- the input yearly? It, it, does it become like a software program that we get to modify based upon the change in needs?
That's the idea long-term. I mean, in the beginning, we have to up, you know, clearly, John will have access to this and will train John and Rebecca, whoever is appropriate to, but on the other hand, I mean, he will need some training and so forth. So we will work closely with you to make sure that it works. I mean, it's not my intention to give you a some, a software, give you some, say, and then disappear, because it might not work at some point. I would like to be with you to be, you know, so that it's helpful to you. But the idea is longer term, yes. That is, we will have to train people to operate the system. I mean, you know, John is great, but when John retires, you need another John. No?
Five more years.
And my advice would be, over time, soon enough, prior to John's retirement, you have a person to train and so forth, because you invest in the future, you don't trust, it's only, you know, people move.
Thank you, yes, yes. Thank you. So, I suppose Boston is your, your first project?
In this space. I have done hundreds of projects for different...
For, for this, for this?
No, no, not for this. But I, we have designed the Federal Aviation System, I mean, I have sizable experience.
Okay, okay. So, because all I hear is Boston, Boston, I suppose, so...
In this area, in this area, with school busing, it's the first and only at the moment. Yours would be second, and two cities in Rhode Island would be third and fourth.
All right, thank you.
That's the current situation.
So I'm just curious, on, on the technical side, you know, in Boston, for example, I wonder how many variables you used for the constraint that you set?
What is your filter? So that I will tell you more technical...
No, I, I...
You asked a technical question, so I need to tell you, give you a technical answer.
Like what kind of stuff do you, do you need to know from us, like, is it the...
No, what I need to know are the fol- this is the data that I need, I need. The addresses of the students, the addresses of the schools, the school times. I, I think, I guess I have Google Maps, so I can find the, the travel times. I need to know which streets will be closed because of the construction. I would also like, say, siblings, but this is included. Who needs for, when I say the addresses, not only the addresses. I need to know if the student needs a wheelchair, if it needs, what are the corner stops that you use at the moment?
All that data will be...
Yeah, but all this data you have, because you cannot build the current system without knowing that.
And those, those will change over time or not?
They change, but, you know, I'm going to build a system with the data I have now. I mean, I don't know how it will change in the future. So the plan would be, we'll give you, let's say, we design a plan, a appropriate plan, and you like it. You say, we are going. We have to rerun the algorithm in early August so that, because there is, you know, we have data in May, but there's a turnover in that, there are people coming, going, and so forth. In first of August, there will be new addresses in the system. So we'll run it then, the al- the, the algorithm runs in about half an hour. I mean, it's not, it's not a gigantic, so, you know, in Boston, half an hour, which is four times the size. I mean, it will run...
Will it also incorporate the demographic data for the voluntary...
Yes, we'll also incorporate this, but this is, if I may, not on the bus. This is at the assignment level. Yeah, the assignment level needs to happen earlier, because you cannot say to the families in the last minute, you have to prepare them. No?
Yes, yes.
So at that level. On that, this would be number one priority. That is, I will work on this immediately. Because I recognize the, the sensitivities involved, but, but, I mean, on the other hand, you view it as a problem. I view it as an exciting opportunity. You can affect positively the city. I mean, I mean, you can, you can say positive things about it, it's not, I mean, it's not only to make money, in other words, it's to, to, to how to serve the community correctly. If you say, for example, look, look, look at an example. So let's say, do they rank the priorities, John? They say, this is my first choice, this is my second choice. Okay, so here's the objective. The objective would be to maximize, let's say, one is priority one, two is priority, the second, and so forth. To maximize the total priority of the students, right? Subject to constraints that the cost is not too overwhelming, the, the ratios, the, the constraints that you mentioned. And you can also play games, you would say, suppose I relax these constraints. What would be the benefit for the, for the, in terms of, it's, it's, it's three objectives here. Is the, is to give priority to students, ideally, you would give every student its top priority. It's impossible, right? But you would like to maximize that. You would like the average thing to be, let's say, one-point-five, meaning fifty percent of the students get their first priority and fifty percent get the second priority. It might not be feasible, right? But then you will also have constraints that say, okay, we have ten, plus, plus or minus ten percent.
There's, there's criteria involved in the assignment policy, it's part of the voluntary decision.
But we will include this criteria in the optimization. Of course we will. And, and the plan is to work close, I think Rebecca does this... We will help her on that. I mean, I'm very excited to do this, by the way. I mean, you realize I'm excited, it's not that I, I view it, what a negative, because I think it will affect the city positively, not negatively. You view it as a negative. And I recognize, if I'm a second... No, but you are afraid of the change. I think it would be beneficial for the city.
Either Mr. Hody or Mr. Hoy, you guys can arm wrestle for it.
I'd just like to mention one thing to you when it comes to the demographics of Lowell. If you're on the north side of the river,
Yes.
you have a lot of, I would say, the lowest income people that we have in the city. The property values are a little bit lower there also. And that's where I think the chaos will come in, because you only really have, I think, two middle schools on that side of the bridge. And on this side of the bridge, obviously, we have more, I forget, six of them maybe, John, I don't know the total. But that's what I'm more concerned about, is this getting us, if we get this plan, are we getting closer to neighborhood schools, even if it's just an inch closer to it? Because when he says the word to me, it's a voluntary thing we're doing. That's what I think we have to start looking at to get back to neighborhood schools. We've been fighting over this issue for almost twenty years. So I'm really liking this plan, I, I want to see more of it, but I'm afraid of the demographics that's going to throw you off. And that comes down to Mrs. Duda's office, probably, but...
They will not throw us off.
Okay.
The appropriate constraints will be there. I mean, that's the beauty of, of optimization. Optimization takes all the constraints into account, all of them, not some of them, the ones that you want them there. And optimizes, it does the best it can, given the constraints you put it. And you might, after a point, say, well, this constraint is too expensive, money-wise, preferences-wise, and you'll say, maybe we relax it a little bit.
Okay, I just have one thing to add. When it comes to the parochial schools, I believe that's going to be one of your tough things, because they're going to come from all sides of the city.
I know.
And going across, so that might be the most difficult thing we have to look at. But anything closer to neighborhood schools, I don't mean to be a hundred percent, but to me, anything closer and saving money, I'm for it. That's all I'm trying to say right now.
It's true. However, don't expect miracles at once.
No, I don't.
But gradually, I think we'll get there. The key here is, you as a committee should be willing to apply some of these savings to improve the quality of the schools, hiring more teachers. I mean, I don't know, you know, if you do that, we are getting closer to neighborhood, because the reason people don't go, the parents would like the children to go to nearby schools, no?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure.
Hard for me to believe they do.
Well, I mean, I'm for that, but some people...
A lot of them do.
Some people might not want to go to a certain school, let's say, on the north side of the river, and they want to be...
But if it's high-quality school, if you improve the...
Okay, I get you there.
If the quality is high, is increasing, you will see more and more people willing, the reason people don't want, I believe, the reason they don't want to neighboring schools is because they perceive quality is low. That's my intuition. Or perhaps, maybe racial aspects, I do not know. But if you sort of improving the quality overall, I believe you are coming closer, it will be coming closer. Because clearly, sending your children to neighboring schools saves money, I mean, it's obvious. I mean, you don't have busing. But, but you have to improve quality as well. So in my opinion, some of these savings need to be applied to improve quality. And I also believe, and I advise you strongly, the public needs to know that. Needs to know, it's not only that the money benefits them. I feel strongly about this money.
Professor, I want to thank you for your answer, I liked that answer, and thank you for everything tonight, I have no more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Ms. Duddy?
I think it's clear that we have a challenge ahead of us. We've had challenges with transportation for as long as I've been paying attention.
We are not alone.
Right, and we're not...
All cities in the country have these issues.
And I can see that, you know, what you're offering us, this opportunity to get, get savings and that you will be paid by a percentage...
It's a completely merit-based story.
Right, a percentage of the savings, it seems, makes a lot of sense. So I would like to move forward with it, but I have a question for you.
Please.
I know that we need to authorize access to the data, we need to...
I cannot do it otherwise.
We need to come into a contract with you. And what exactly would you be looking for in terms of a commitment from us? Is it, are you looking for a five-year commitment, a five-year contract, or...
The, the commitment is as follows. I mean, we'll write it in a legal way. The commitment is this, you have a choice every year to use the solution I propose or not. You don't have to use it, but if you use it and it leads to X savings, I get twenty percent, the company I have is twenty percent, you keep the eighty percent, year by year. If on one year you don't want to do it, it would be, in my opinion, crazy not to do it, but things change in life, then you don't have to. I mean, you have really no risk. I mean, you have really no risk. I mean, I'm not trying to take you in anything you don't, if you, if John, and, and I bet you hear, you will hear the expert's opinion, I mean, you know, I would imagine, I mean, you have to, I mean, he knows what he's doing. If he says, let's do this, it's because it's beneficial for the city. But if you decide not to, you owe me money, you don't owe me anything.
So if I could...
Am I making sense?
Yes, I, I think, I mean, I would like to move forward with a motion, I mean, as Chair of Transportation. Oh, do you have a comment? Okay.
I just have a, Ms. Chairman, I just have a concern that, because it is transportation, and that involves parochial schools as well, I don't think we are the only one who should make the change. I think that should involve parochial's decision also, because if the savings should come from them as well, I don't know if, how you feel about that, but that's how I feel. If we make, if we make all the changes, and then parochials have all the benefits of...
Can I get the facts before I ask, answer? I don't know the facts, who pays?
I'll, I'll answer that one. Mr. Lay, the, this is, the choice is, the choice of the whole school committee. The parochial schools have no standing in, in this, it's our policy. If we offer a citywide, a, a citywide, uh...
Option.
Option, then they're allowed by law. If we don't offer a citywide...
However, if, if we need to...
We don't.
However, though, if we make, if we make a, a school bill change, for example, then they, they have to, they have to agree on that too.
No, they do not. They do not have to agree on anything.
That, that's right, they have to agree in order to save...
They would just have to fall under what we do if they wanted to participate in our program. We are under no obligation to fit their schedule into our system.
We're not making any changes, we're just going to study.
Basically, what, what you're, what you're voting on tonight, and to put forth to the full committee, is the okay to move forward with the consult, with the consulting group?
Right, we're, we're looking at it...
From a legal perspective, we want to get into an agreement, that's, that's basically...
And it would just be for a consultant to give us suggestions, we're not making any changes. We're not making any changes about school start times or assignment at this point. The decision before us tonight, and to put forward to the full committee, is whether we want to move forward with a study, with looking at his algorithms, to see how we can do better, but no changes will be decided now. That, that's...
And at no cost!
What we're going to do.
I, I hope it's clear. And at no cost!
You said you were done, Mr. Hoy, but go ahead.
I know, but after listening to other people, so what I think should happen now, just to put in your head, is maybe part of your plan should be getting away from the two citywide schools we have, to make up, maybe it'll help as far as parochial schools, is there a way we can get rid of...
Well, we have, we have more than two citywide schools.
Oh, we do.
We have, we have more than four, we have the Rock...
The Pine School and the Botlet, those are...
Those are two, Robinson, the Lincoln, uh...
All right, those are citywide schools.
Yeah, those are citywide schools.
Could we ever eliminate those, John? Is it possible?
That's the, that's the crux of our problem with transportation. If we offer one student, if there's one school that has citywide...
Yeah.
You have to offer parochial schools citywide privileges.
But look what this study gives you. You are contemplating ideas, eliminating citywide schools and so forth. Let's say, Dimitri, please, let's say, we don't have citywide school, what would be the benefit? So whatever decisions you make are informed decisions, you would know, eliminating that will benefit the city two million dollars. You don't know that at the moment. Well, you might not decide to do it, of course, I realize that. But at least you know the financial consequences of whatever you decide, which we clearly do not know. I mean, in a sense, what am I offering to you? I'm offering to you a possibility to learn better your choices, to make far more informed decisions that benefit the city, benefit the children, and save money for the city. And if you decide not to do any of this, we are still friends. It was a bad business decision I made, I lost money on that, okay, I'm willing to do it.
Ms. Martin?
So the recommendation, Ms. Dorday, I'm assuming, is that, which would come to the full committee on Wednesday, I mean, we're basically going to be working with, with you and your group...
Yeah.
To create kind of a real-time modeling system that would allow us to plug in...
Yeah.
Within reason...
Yeah, within reason.
Five, ten, fifteen different, but...
Scenarios.
Yeah, I don't want to scare you.
I mean, overwhelming you is not good either. I have some experience in work, it's not the first time. I work with large-scale environments, I mean, I have no, I mean, I have worked, you know, key here is, we need to have a great working relation, myself and my team, with John and Rebecca. It's very important, so that, you know, he gives us feedback, we give back, we understand, and so forth. If we have that, because the technology is there, I mean, we're going to invent, we have it. I mean, it's not, we have to adapt it to Lowell, but...
Okay. So that's just kind of, so we'd have the opportunity then to have...
Informed decisions.
A software process that would allow us to plug in, you know, yes, to, to citywide schools, but no to...
That's right.
You know, something else.
You got it.
That we could kind of play with those numbers.
And others, others.
And get real, okay, and get kind of a real-world estimation of, of savings or impact to families and all that.
And I would argue, I would argue, if Boston communicated to the public correctly about the benefits of start time, they did not, they, they handled, I mean, I love these people, they are dedicated public, so don't get me wrong, it's not a, but, but the facts are facts, they did not communicate correctly. And this, instead of being seen as a fantastic thing for Boston, as the ACLU and Boston Globe eventually found, it was viewed as negative, even though it was fantastically positive for the city. Not for a hundred percent of the population, but for ninety-two percent of the population, to be exact. I mean, that's all right, eh? I mean, that's the, unfortunately, nobody would be better a hundred percent, but a big percentage of the population. That's the process, that's the, the process. I hope you decide positively, I'm excited to work with you. If not, I also understand, I have other things to do also.
Before we, we end, I, I want to thank you for your time...
Of course, my pleasure.
And for presenting to us, you mentioned parochial schools, or, I worked at a, at a parish where the pastor always got the last word, so as chairman, I'm going to use that advantage tonight. I know, as we go forward with this, change is always frightening to people, change is always resistant to people, nobody likes to change. People are going to be upset with us when we put in any change. The changes that we will propose, hopefully, will be for the benefits of the students, as well as some financial benefit. It's an escalating cost that we need to cap. The timeframe, as much as I would like to see it for next school year, realistically listening to my colleagues, I don't think that will happen. I'm going to push for it Wednesday night, but I don't think that will happen, I think it'll be at least a year away. But at least we'll have, I'm hoping, at least, as Mr. Hoy had mentioned, this has gone on for twenty years in the city, that they've been talking about changing the way we do things. So we need to change, because we can't keep doing everything the same way. So hopefully, the discussion has just begun, we will move forward, we can bring up this, well, you, you can't accept that there's nothing to put, as the way the agenda is constructed right now, we don't have this meeting on the agenda for Wednesday's, as a summary. So when we talk about the other motion I have regarding transportation, someone could make a friendly amendment and make a different motion at that time, because we don't have this listed on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting.
You could amend it.
So when I, when we discuss my original motion, you can amend it and bring in your motion at that time, it's the only reason I was trying to stop you from trying to make the official motion, because we don't have it on the agenda, and we can't put it on the agenda. So you could do it as a motion when we discuss my other motion about looking at Mr. Dakota's design. So at this time, I want to thank everybody for coming.
Hold on, just a minute, if I may.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I appreciate it. Off-subject, but transportation-related, Jack, are you the chair? Okay. I am asking for a full committee vote, either Wednesday or the next meeting, about putting an invitation for bid out to bring a busing in-house. I've begun the process, and I've been working with DPD about available land that we have in the city, and the possibility of looking at bringing it in-house. That's something that would be in two or three years, but this is something that I'd, I'd like to look into, to start the process.
We, we, we should...
We... No, we'd be taking...
No, we'd be running transportation.
We'd be running transportation.
You could, if you could bring that in for the next school committee meeting? Yes, please.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that be under the school committee's eegis, or the city's eegis? Like, who would be in charge?
Right now, the city is, provides the money for transportation, so it'd be under the city's...
Right.
The city provides it, but...
They might.
They might, or they could, but again, this is something that we'll have to, you said, it's off-topic, so...
But once again, this is a process that I just want to start, to look into, I've done some preliminary work, but this is not something that's going to happen tomorrow, this is two to three years out.
Right, so it's something for the next meeting to discuss.
Can I tell you something on this?
Go ahead.
Okay. So you need, this actually is a good idea, in my humble opinion. However, you need to know, you need a system that will tell you, what type of buses do you have? In Boston, there are four types of buses, big buses, fifty students, smaller buses, twenty students, small, you know, the, the distribution of buses, because you buy them, it's a long investment, you need advice on what to do. The, the program gives you this advice.
Right. And this, to begin with, this would be just the regular education buses, and we'd be looking at propane gas. And we'd be looking at federal grants to try to help us purchase it. I would think this would not be a capital outlay, just because of what the city is